No moves.
Say for significant saying hi.
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 Hi, it wasn't even on. Whoops.
Hi.
Alright, first up is discussion item apportionment for twenty-four twenty-five.
So are we getting, are you using that document or are we using the other? Oh, you're doing.
Yeah, the worksheet, okay. Okay, so for the public, I'm sure it's kind of hard to read in the PDF version. With my glasses, it's hard to read. So this is our apportionment worksheet for twenty-four twenty-five. And we did this in January, so this is based off of December's apportionment. And so this demonstrates the enrollment for grade and per building. And then it also demonstrates what we are funded by the state per position.
So some things that, I'm gonna pull my microphone closer because I'm probably gonna talk more this evening. Some things that we want people to understand is. If, and Deanna can tag me on this too. So if we decide that we want to have a class of twenty students, or if we want to have a class of something, and that is our wishes. That doesn't necessarily mean this state funds us on what we want. They have a mathematical formula that they fund those positions on. The other thing that you see in this is. When we talk about program or categorical dollars. A bilingual teacher or a special education teacher, they're funded out of different funds. You wanna tag, is there anything you wanna add on that, Deanna? As an example.
Well, well, this apportionment worksheet is just basic ed.
Right.
Okay.
I guess I wanted them to.
It's just basic ed, so when you look at the numbers and go, well, this just says, I don't know, if we add up the teachers, one hundred and three teachers, we have more than that. Well, yeah, because with special ed and lab and title and so that is, so when you look at this, we're only talking about basic ed.
Yep, so we have, if you look at even just the certified staff. We have, and this is just teachers, it does not include principals. We only have forty of our, our certified staff are paid via program. So we are funded for a hundred and three point nine, and we have a hundred and twenty-three certified staff in, in basic education.
Okay, so let's slow down, do you want, go ahead, Michelle, I was gonna go up here and show where.
Yeah, no, I was gonna ask just if you could kinda walk me through where I'm finding these on the spreadsheet. Okay.
If you look at, if you look at the spreadsheet, so there's the little small portion at the top, it's just below that, it says totals, right, where Kim's pointing? That's the totals of what they fund us.
Funded, yes. Where do I see what we actually have?
Oh, not on this.
So we, so this is, this is a spreadsheet from OSPI that we use every single year. And we put in December's apportionment amounts, because that's what we budgeted for. So this shows what the state funds us and what we're actually paying for.
So this doesn't show any of that additional money that we ask our community for in taxes, for example, this is just our state apportionment.
So, so for, for twenty-four twenty-five, we won't know until November of twenty-twenty-five what the levy actually pays for. So we have a sub-fund worksheet from twenty-three twenty-four that, that shows, and I, I presented that in our year-end. That shows what the state pays for and what the shortfall is. But we won't know really what the shortfall is for twenty-four twenty-five until November with year-end.
So let's see, whoa, sorry, so let's see if, so I'm gonna go back to what Deanna said or Delise said in that hundred and three number, right? That hundred and three number and the difference. While we don't know the dollar amount, the difference in the number of teachers is what our EPNO levy pays for. Okay, so it, I don't know the dollar amount, but that's the people that it pays for.
Now, also though, like for instance, on librarians. Librarians, we have a full-time, a half, half-time librarian and five full-time library assistants. So just because it says that many librarians, we use that funding to pay for all of those positions. So even though they give you the funding like this, that's like how they give it to you, doesn't mean you match those numbers necessary. Yeah, nursing is a good example too, just like the librarians, we have two full-time nurses and we have. Well, three half-time, we have three half-time, you know, health room and office assistant, and then two full-time nursing assistants, so. Every, every district kinda chooses how they configure that.
But if you notice, they only pay us.
Three point one.
Three point one nurses, but we have to cover our two nurses and our nursing assistants out of that allocation. And the pay rate per se of that amount does not cover our cost of just our two nurses.
Can you, can you go back at, sorry, to the teachers? I, I think you, you gave us a number on how many teachers are paid out of like categorical funds. What was that again?
A hundred and twenty-three. So we have forty full-time certified staff that are paid out of program money. And we have a hundred and seventy-five, a hundred and seventy-five, a hundred and seventy-three teachers. So we have a hundred and twenty-three teachers out of the hundred and, a hundred and seventy-five that are paid out of general fund.
A hundred and twenty-three.
A hundred and twenty-three.
About twenty.
Hundred, yeah.
About twenty of them.
So I think that, excuse me, so I think that's, you know, part of, when you look at the portion, those that haven't maybe seen it. Uh, here online is, we only actually get money for a hundred and four teachers. So basically, that, those dollars either get made up by levy, levy monies. And that's not including, you know, all the other things that, that come with, you know, teacher salaries, benefits, stuff like that. So I just wanted to clarify that real quick, thank you.
Have a question real quick, the, um. This is number of positions, is there a set rate? Like, how do they calculate how much money to give you per person?
It's in a teacher's contract at the back of the, back.
But, but, but she, I think she's asking like how do they calculate, they do have a rate, the state has a rate that they choose, yeah.
The state has a rate and there's a base column, so for like principals, you can see that they pay a hundred and seven thousand, a hundred and seven and nine hundred and fifty-five dollars per principal. We have no principal on our staff that makes that much money at all. So we're paying above and beyond what the state funds us for, for every single certified position.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question, that's okay. Um, a good example is the salary there, the seventy-eight, two oh nine. You see that number, the seven, go down from the principals? That's what they're paying for teacher, per teacher.
And if you've seen Crosser's salary schedule, we do not pay our, our, that's not our average salary at all.
And that is.
What is our average salary?
It's about seventy-seven, it's right in the middle.
And so if you compare us to other like-sized districts, we are in the middle of the pay scale. Does that make sense, what I'm saying? We're not the highest-paid teachers and we're not the lowest-paid teachers, we're right in the middle. And so that's also something we do when we're negotiating, we try and stay in the middle. This isn't about negotiations tonight, but I'm just using that as an example.
And that seventy-eight is just salary, not salary and benefit?
That's it. That's.
And benefit?
Yeah, I'm gonna check with Delise on that. Delise, that seventy-eight, two oh nine includes their benefit, that's everything we get per teacher. Yeah.
Okay.
So we know enough about benefits, we're using thirty-six percent right now?
We're using, yes, thirty-six percent, and if you see, it has a little bit of an increase, but it's not very much. So the maintenance sort of, sort of, the cert staff is seventy-two thousand. The increase went up to seventy-eight, but that's all together for, for everything. So the seventy-seven thousand average salary is just base, that does not include any benefits. But that does include, include enrichment hours, so that's kinda nice, but not the thirty percent.
So if you go down, I'm gonna hold this up and I can go back up there, in this column right in here, this area. The other thing is if you take a look at MSOC, you'll see insurance benefits, payroll benefits, right, Delise? Down, right down here.
Yep, the additional.
Yep, so those are some additional fees, but even if you look at the salary plus that insurance, right, we're not even close, we're not even.
Do we have a, like. I know you say we're not even close, but do we have a number? Like how much? Oh, I don't even know how to even phrase this question, but how much on average would? Are we paying over the upstate allotments that, that's used for like levy dollars?
So I think the, the most direct way would be to look at our salary schedule that's at the back of the CBA that's on the website. And you could see where the seventy-eight is in the middle. And this particular year, well, we have more, not younger, but we have some younger teachers, but we have some that are topped out on, we have probably more, a lot. That are topped out on the bottom right, like if you think of a graph, that are the highest paid.
Over seventy percent of our teachers have master's degrees, so that.
That's why it's skewed so much.
Yeah.
That's why the seventy-eight thousand is our average base salary, because we have so, and it's not a bad thing, we have so many educated teachers that have been with us for so long, they're topped out.
That's just the number that the, the state uses.
So if they figure based on your enrollment, you need, you get so many teachers per, you know, for so many students. It's like, so that's, this is when the state went away from the state salary schedule, when it really made things complicated and difficult for districts. Because on the state salary schedule, whatever a teacher was, like if we chose to do enrichment hours over and stuff, that was on us. But if we had a teacher that was, you know, masters in twenty, then that's how, what the money we got from the state. And then if they were a brand-new teacher, then that's the amount of money we got from the state, and everybody had the same salary schedule. So then they went away from that, so then it ultimately becomes a district's responsibility. One, not only to negotiate the salary schedule and everybody's on different ones. But also, you, you, you're not gonna get, you could have a really fantastic, mature, experienced staff, and you're real, it really makes it worse for you.
So if we go look at this, or. So basically, the state for basic ed says we only, we should only have a hundred and three teachers. Based on the number of kids that we have, right?
So it's based on, if you look at the top, it's based on the state-funded class size.
Oh, gotcha.
And, and that number's a little bit different, you know, K-two is seventeen, you get up into K-three, and then forth, every, it goes up a little bit. But the reality is, we, we, we are overstaffed, we're overstaffed now, we're working on making reductions. But the reality of what the state funds is not the reality of what school districts have to do.
Right.
It just doesn't work that way. We don't have the exact same number of kids in every grade level with the exact same number, you know, it just, it's, it's a model, they have to have a model because. But it is an, it's a, it is not fully funding education.
Right.
So another one that's really important to look at here today when we're talking about is, let's look at the safety line. They fund us for point four-three of one security person. And we have five. That's an example of where our level of expertise, our level of expectation in our district. Does not match what.
Well, and I think even you look down at technology, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
We're only supposed to get one point two people for, for technology, I mean.
Maintenance and custodial.
Yeah, when, when the whole district runs on computers.
We, we, we are struggling to keep our buildings going now, and if we only had nine custodians, that's one per building plus an extra one at each of the four bigger buildings. That's just not realistic.
We have doubled that, at least, at least. And let's look food service, is it on here? No, because it's funded differently, because it's funded differently, sorry. But, but those are just things that we wanted to be really, oh, office support. I think that one's kind of unique.
Well, I think honestly, teaching assistance, which would be pairs.
Oh, yeah.
Four. Okay, so we, most of our pairs are program pairs, special ed, lab, title, migrant, bilingual. But whenever they're doing supervision, playground duty, recess, that's basic ed. So four people are supposed to, that's it?
Manage all our buildings, all our lunches, all our resources.
Even if we put a little bit, and we put a little bit of basic ed on all of our pairs to do that work. With the exception of some of our like one-on-one pairs, and I would be with a student with, with needs that they would have to be there full-time, and they don't do regular like recess supervision or bus duty. There's no way.
I think our total pairs, program and everything, we're in the number of.
We have about seventy pairs.
Pairs. Now, like Deanna said, I want everybody to realize, I'm gonna say it again, a lot of them are program dollars, but. We, and I want you to think about, if you have smaller children, think about what recess duty would look like with one adult per recess per building, and they only pay us for four, so which building's not gonna have a lunchroom supervision?
Or the bus.
Or the bus.
Or after school.
Very interesting and frustrating document, for sure.
That's why we share.
And, and I think this is really important for public record also, where we have, may not have a lot of people listening or observing tonight. I think it's important that they go back and listen, this, we're not. This is not something we make up, this is not something that, this is just truly, and you can see the apportionment number, all of this stuff is on OSPI. It's all visible, it's all public record, so it's not something that we.
We just made this a lot easier for you to.
Yeah, but I'm just saying it's, so it's not changing.
Well, I think a lot of people within the community probably don't realize the difference between basic ed, you know, some of the categorical stuff. And what we really get for basic ed and how kinda hard it is to manage a district with what we get, so. I think it's good, glad we're doing it.
So for anybody who's listening tonight, or anybody who listens in a recording. Deanna, myself, and Delise would be happy to meet with anybody at any time to, so that you felt like you were at least somewhat familiar with this. So if you're listening and you would like to do that, we'd be happy to, to share that. On anything we talk about tonight.
Other questions on apportionment? I think I saw Frank in there, Frank, do you have anything?
No, I do not, just taking it all in, it's, it's, it's a little overwhelming.
So Blake, could you change this to the next? I'm gonna let Delise tell this story. We're not gonna go through this whole slide deck, I want everybody to hear us, we're not doing it, but it is publicized for you. But we're gonna tell you where this came from, why we decided to do it, and so on.
Um, so I first heard about K-12 enrollment in a WASBO budget workshop last year. By the time I heard about the company itself, it was too late in our budget process, and it just was not going to be worth the money, so we did not use them last year. Um, it is two principals in Washington State. They have a company and they do enrollment projections. They look at birth rates and housing and all of, all of the things. Othello is the closest district that used them. They love them, and so we decided to use them this year to get a projection, it's fifteen hundred dollars a year, and they update the information three or four times a year, depending on. Construction, birth rates, all of that good stuff. So we started working with them this year, we gave them all of our information, and our projections for twenty-four twenty-five came in about three or four different.
We were so excited.
We were pretty on, on, on par with it. But we've been working with them, and it's very interesting to see their different models. A very conservative model, and then a very opposite of a conservative model, and then we fall basically right in the middle. And we're, we're pretty spot-on, so we've been pretty happy with their services, and we will continue to use them. I think it's just, it's, it's kind of nice to have an outside company come in and validate your work and your information, especially to the community. And it's, it's very eye-opening also to see, and you'll see what method that we decided to use. But no matter which method we're using, it, there's a decline in the moment, unfortunately.
So which slide do you want Blake to go to? So let's, let's scroll down. If Blake, you could go to the exhibit one A, it's white, that one right there, and could you just blow it up for just a moment?
So we, we included the whole report in the board packet, so you, everybody was able to see the differences. All three of us have, have agreed on this particular model, because it's very much aligns with how we budget now for enrollment.
So this particular graph, if you're staying at home, this is past data that is used to move forward. Okay, Blake, what slide do you wanna go to, Delise?
Eleven, page eleven, please.
Page eleven?
So there's a lot more in here, but you can use it for your going-to-sleep time later tonight, if you haven't had a chance to read it on. But this I thought was interesting, I will tell you, historically, we've always used the cohort model to project enrollment. So in the cohort model, we're projecting enrollment by taking the students that we had in kindergarten and rolling them up to first grade. Craig used to always do the, the cohort minus one percent, that was kinda his, his thing, just to be conservative. Usually is quite accurate, you know, you would, might be off by a little here and there, but usually there was a, like the net was pretty, pretty close. And then that year hit that we had that super-low kindergarten class. And then it was like, oh my god, what do, you know, all of a sudden we had, you know, thirteen kids in a kindergarten class and school was starting, like there was no more kindergartners coming. So this is really helpful, I thought this piece on the birth rates, and Delise can talk about it, but they go and look at, they're using birth rates as well to predict our enrollment, in, birth rates and baby count.
Correct, so not only are they using birth rates, but they're using construction, they use a cohort model. So they see how many kids have moved from grade to grade. And really, the, the basis of the data is what the three of us have decided to use for enrollment is, is pretty spot-on. But all of their projections, we can see in the next two, three, four years, our funding is going to go down significantly. No matter what model you look at, we're going to lose a lot more students. So we need to plan efficiently for that.
Probably page eighteen, Blake?
Um, actually, Blake, would you stop at thirteen? I think this.
The graph?
The graph, that one.
Yes.
And then just blow that up just a bit. I think what you need to see here is the red is past or current, and blue is projection. Okay, so that's using all the data that they have, birth rates for the next years and so on and so forth. And that's what we need to look at moving forward regarding on which model we decide to do. This is some, this is very telling of what we're up against. Okay, now you go to which one?
Now go to eighteen.
Wait, hold on just a second, real quick, on the last graph. What was our projected enrollment for this year?
Twenty-three hundred FTE.
Twenty-three hundred?
FTE, yes. So this is headcount.
Oh, gotcha.
Twenty-three ninety-four is headcount.
And remember, the headcount is, you know, we could have twenty-five hundred students, but our FTE might show up as like twenty-four, twenty-five, because we have all the kids do running starter, might have a partial schedule. Or might come partially homeschool, partially to school, those kinds of cases.
So our state funding is FTE-based, not headcount.
Correct.
We report both, but they only fund off the FTE.
So if, and it might be the cart before the horse, but if we're looking into next year, you would tentatively look at this graph at twenty-three sixty-two. Headcount, and then, so we're probably realistically gonna be somewhere in that twenty-three eighty? Or no, sorry, twenty-two eighty?
Yeah, correct, yeah, so we, we would be down twenty kids from what we budgeted.
Okay, thank you.
Even though you're gonna, will you stop at seventeen? I'm sorry, Blake.
Sorry, Blake, up, down, up, down.
It's the one with the graph at the bottom with all the lines on it. Yes. Um, and I'm just, you're gonna do this on your own, but this is all the trends, the different trends you can use. That's just what that shows, okay? Now you can go to eighteen, Blake.
So this one then transitions to the, it shows you FTE on the top, headcount at the bottom.
So when you get, when it said twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-three sixty, and you said twenty-two eighty, you'll notice it says twenty-two eighty-six, right? So it's the best estimate. So what we're saying, like, we want to always budget conservatively, and this is what we're using as a tool, and we'll still fall probably between lower and best.
And I did our old-school enrollment, and I think I got twenty-two eighty-five. So our old-school is one of the models they use as well, but I think our in-between that best estimate and lower estimate is a good, is a good estimate for us. And hopefully like last year, we'll have, our enrollment will go up. Be higher than what we anticipated, obviously, it's not going up, but higher than what we had projected.
And I think everybody needs to understand why we do that, because if you're off at your beginning best guess in September, in January, you start paying back. What you over-budgeted, and so it's way better to be on the other side of that coin.
I think I've heard this question answered before. This is, this is indicative of schools all across our states, is that correct?
That's correct, and, and one of the big points that, when we met, to, before this estimate, even after this estimate was done, is there is a declining birth rate, birth rates across the country. It just, it just is, so every, that's why all school districts are dealing with it, because people are not having as many kids.
If you just Google birth rate, like nineteen eighty, and then birth, birth rate two thousand in the United States. You know, it always used to be, every household had two-point-one-five kids, it used to be kind of a joke, and now it's like one-point-eight-four.
Yeah, yep, okay, thank you.
And then someone said to me, maybe you can provide a good answer, because I couldn't. But the comment was made to me like, well, so what, if you have fifteen less kids in your kindergarten class and you have one less teacher, how's that really hurt your budget, just hire one less teacher?
That, that works, and, and, unless it happens in August. So when we enroll kindergartners, we'll start, we'll open enrollment in March tenth, and we'll enroll kids all the way up through June, and we'll even be, you know, things will be coming in, the secretaries come in like once a week and, and clear kids through the summer. And then there's a group of kids that show up, usually about a class of kids shows up in August. So we're hedging our bets on how many we think we're gonna, are gonna come, and like that happened like eight or nine years ago, all of a sudden, we lost like sixty kids. We already had the teacher side.
Paying the contract, once they've, they've signed a contract for.
Hire the teachers, you're hiring teachers in August or after school already started, and taking them from their kindergarten teacher, and you're, so it's a, it's a, it's a challenging to do that. But yes, you're using your best guess and you're relying on your path, what your, your history has been. So having a service like this that then enrolled, like those pieces, like the construction rates and the birth rates is huge.
I think the other piece that I would share to that person who asked is, the way our CBA is written. We just can't walk up to kindergarten teacher number seven and say, I'm sorry, we don't have enough this year, goodbye, because our seniority rate things come into play. So we, all, after May fifteenth, and we can't, so we have to do this all, get best guess. And let's say we said, okay, you were the last one hired on August third. But that August third hire might have been in seventh grade English, well, that seventh grade English can't do the kindergarten. But that August third hire might have been in seventh grade English. Well, that seventh grade English can't do the kindergarten.
And, and you know, if we have really, we have pretty, but we get kindergarten, we get new students, many new students through uh, after Labor Day weekend, like we're getting new students through that time. There's always kids that are coming in and enrolling late. But yeah, you have to make your best guess. You put those kids in class and then there's been times we've had to add a teacher, cause classes were too big. And that's a hard, that's a hard phone call home, like, sorry. Your, your little guy's been in this class for three weeks, but we have to move them and they're gonna start, basically start over. That's tough.
I think an example of that was, we went up thirteen students last month. Now, if all of those had been in one elementary school, all of those classes would have been way over.
And another thing is, in, in September, a lot of the times, kids don't start until after the first count day. So for example, if, if, if they're enrolled, we can't count them. We have to wait until they're actually in the seat. So this year, our enrollment jumped in September or in October, because compared to the first count day in September, there weren't as many kids in seats and we can't count them until then. Um, and that's a big problem across the country, not just in Prosser. Um, and we've heard that in budget workshops and, and, and everything is a lot of, a lot of kids don't start on the fourth count day of school where, where schools get their, their count. So that also makes it.
Yeah, that um, Labor Day weekend is the, the fourth count day is Friday and then we're out Monday and then we have lots of kids show up on Tuesday.
And so we don't get that, while we will have better.
You get it eventually, but not for that month.
And so that's why you'll see the fluctuation, but then our actual portion of money stays flat until February.
So it's always the first five days after the first day of school for any district. It's the fourth, it's the fourth school day that is counting.
On the start of school and then.
Districts that, a lot of districts on the west side, their first day is always after Labor Day.
Yeah, so it's their fourth day. I think the reality is, it's not about that weekend, like people do what they do. And when you have twenty-five hundred kids in a school district, you might have twenty show up on a different day when school's just starting. People are moving, they're doing whatever. I mean, it's not usually people that are here, just hanging out, didn't go to school.
So Chini, Chini made a comment the other day during a workshop is sometimes the communication isn't great either. And so if you have a kindergartner and you don't know, most parents don't think that school starts until after Labor Day and it's after counting. Um, and so their counts get skewed and their teacher amounts get skewed, because their, their amount, that the kids that are in the seats are, is not accurate in the fourth day of school, ever. Um, so it, it becomes a challenge.
So I'm gonna go back to something that was, that is gonna come up in this discussion, whether it's today or the next meeting. That's where TK comes in and is our friend, right? Cause we're prepping those families and especially those with the first student to school, right? They're the, the oldest student, child in the family. Or whatever, and then we already have them in and they know the system and they're getting the communication. Rather than, oh my gosh, it's Labor Day, right? And, or it's time to go back to school and school's been going for seven days. So um, we're going to be budgeting using a little bit less than best estimate, but not as low as, lower. Um, we've working, we've worked with Patterson already. We know we have sixteen, sixteen coming from Patterson. Um, and then we've done our calculations and they're enrolled, they're getting ready to register for next year for running start. So we'll be able to verify that before we do the final budgeting piece, but that's, I think where we're heading, right? About six to ten below that best estimate.
That's a big chunk of revenue.
So that's the document, we're gonna leave it up here. What we have on letter C is, what does this mean? Right? Lower enrollment for twenty-five, twenty-six and lower enrollment, this shows you for the years to come. Lower enrollment means lower revenue. And costs are going up. They're already predicting that our insurance cost is gonna be another thirty percent. Thirty percent above this year's.
And I, we have been in contact with districts all over the area. Nobody is switching. It is not conducive to switch. I think upfront, it's cost conducive to switch to this other company that's available. But from our friendly neighborhood districts, it does not work out for them in the end. So as crappy as it is to pay a million dollars a year for insurance, I don't think that we have any other option, right?
Do, do you know if uh, if they're going to increase the apportionment back to cover some of that cost from the state?
Great question.
So that's what's in the legislature. Right now, you're talking about the big three, sped transportation and M-SOC. And the idea is that that's what we're asking for, to level out the M-SOC costs. Um, I was at a superintendent meeting today and originally, if you think back to when legislator went, legislature went into session, what was that, just about a month ago now? They were saying that the state of Washington's in a twelve billion dollar deficit and out today came thirteen point three. And so I think the answer is they would like to. I really do believe that. Um, but the money's gonna come from somewhere. Um, and where is that gonna come from? And are we gonna get enough? Are we gonna get thirty percent, which would be two hundred and forty thousand dollars more? Cause if our, if our insurance bill, let's just say is eight hundred thousand, thirty percent, right, is two forty. So we're gonna be at one point zero four million this year? And are we gonna get two hundred and forty thousand dollars more in M-SOC, probably not?
They didn't even cover it for this year.
Oh, no, no, I think.
Not even, not even half the.
Well, and remember, M-SOC has to cover our other materials, operations, I mean, because we still have paper to buy and I mean, power to pay for and all, everything's going up, so it's not just insurance. That, that's just a bigger chunk and a little harder to swallow.
Yep. I think we kind of fixate on it, because it's something that's very large. It's something we can do the math in our head really quick, right? Um, but um, I don't know what the cost of insurance is gonna change for medical dental vision, right? I don't know what the cost of fuel or our utilities like that are going on, or there's discussion going around in our area. Our taxes, things like that.
If you know that you're gonna lose, let's say fifteen kids, is it easy to calculate what that revenue loss is, or is it not as simple as just a per kid?
Well, it is, but it isn't. And so we use ten thousand dollars a student. That's what we use in our heads when we're, we're doing math, sitting in an office. It's like nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars or whatever. So we, we use ten thousand dollars. So, right? And right now.
That does not include M-SOC, by the way. That's just a general.
And so you lose that all more. The other thing is, is if we look at and, and I've been generalizing and, and Deanna's been helping me with this generalization. But I'm doing it as simple as can be. We're graduating in the neighborhood of two fifty. And we're bringing in one seventy. It's, it's that's, it's a little.
Fifty, uh, that isn't the FTE, because there are kids that are running start, you know, things. It's not, it's not. That's, that's the FTE, because they're in running start and some have partial schedules and such. But the incoming, so it doesn't look as bad, but think about that one seventy by the time they're juniors and seniors and thirty of them go to running start.
It's one forty.
Yeah.
And so what I'm trying to explain is, if that was, if you use that as a general rule of thumb, that's eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That has to come out of the budget, out of the get-go with no increases and no long-term projected enrollment.
Well, and that's just general fund. That, that affects all of our program dollars also, big time.
So, do they ca, excuse me, do they calculate the M-SOC money in the same formula as the apportionment?
The M-SOC's a little bit different. Um, we get a little bit more for high school kids. Um, I can send you the John Janaf sheet that shows what exactly they give us for, but I mean, it's
It's like a hundred and sixty thousand just for high school. But only three million changed, at least according to this, but, right? Three point one?
Yep.
And then another hundred and sixty on top of that.
Yep, for the increased cost.
But if you lose and if you lose students, does that, how, how does that affect that number?
Oh, it'll, so the M-SOC goes by our FTE.
Okay.
So it goes down just like our apportionment.
And we still have a million dollar transfer cost.
So and the thing is, is with USIP, they don't, we don't even tell them how many students we have. It's by property, items, um, vehicles, all, all of that. Um, but I, we are not, we are not the only ones. I am in an email thread with all the districts in our area and our, our cohort of ESD one twenty-three and everybody's having the same issue.
Right.
And, and districts that have changed have felt immense um, monetary. It's, it's been hard. It's been hard. So upfront, they're saving money, but if something happens, the coverage is not the same.
I think for those who are listening or gonna listen to the recording, that is part of like when you'll see the requests for qualifications for selling our property. It, granted those, some of those properties don't have high values and whatever, but we're trying to save everywhere we can so that one, that's taxes, that's utilities, you know, you can't not heat a building, you can't, right? So when we're doing that, we're trying to streamline all the way across all of our systems. To, and, and maybe that total of that, what if it take, what if we do save, and it wouldn't be this amount, but what if we save fifty thousand dollars, right? I mean, on buildings that we're not using or property that we're not using.
Better stick in that.
Yeah, but I mean, that's, that's the idea by only keeping and managing and taking care of what we have. Um, so.
Deanna, Delise, anything else we wanted to share with them tonight?
I wish we had good news.
But we felt that it was a part to start here, which is your income, your revenue, which is based off apportionment. And we're gonna have these as time goes on, but we needed time for people to review it, for you to review it, to do it. So when we feel like we're the bearer of bad news.
But I, I am usually the positive person all the time, so I'm gonna say, we are in much better shape than we would have been. Look at the enrollment jump that we had and that has put us in a better position, even though it's still a really big challenge.
I think the other thing is, is you know, we're nervous about our reserve, we're nervous about our cash flow and all those things. But there are districts either in our ESD and across the state that have, like we had a discussion today, there is a, a district that has a point one seven reserve.
Percent?
Yeah, percent, point one seven percent. Like not even one whole percent, right? Point one seven of a percent. And so, so we, we don't like being the bearer of bad news and Deanna's right. We are so much better off than others, but we have to be proactive and long-range projecting, you know, since you've been, we have, since I've been sitting with you, you're saying like, how are we gonna take care of these buildings? What are we gonna do looking down the line? But that's what we're trying to prepare, that this conversation has to be long-range.
It is not a secret that our state, our districts in our state are struggling. It is unfortunately, it's, it's everyone all over. Um, and it's, these are not easy conversations.
Delise, what was the number? I think four more districts went into binding conditions. So I think there's thirteen now, or fourteen?
Fourteen.
Four, binding conditions? Yes, and that means.
They have a, a negative fund balance and they, they ended the twenty-three, twenty-four school year on a negative fund balance.
And some of theirs are little, but some of those are huge districts, so it's not just impacting little or medium or big, right?
Huge Seattle area school districts.
And that's also public record, and so it's not me saying something, I just, I'm.
I mean. See somebody else that's in a terrible financial situation, just like us and it we, we talk and we're like, okay, we're not, we're not the only ones that are struggling right now. So it, it is a very unfortunate situation, but I think especially the districts in our area anyways, and how much we communicate with them, um, everybody is, everybody's struggling.
Frank, you got a comment or question?
Yeah, I was just, I was just gonna ask Delise if you were going to say, come up with a five-year plan on how much we would have to, to decrease our budget each year. Would that be roughly an average of five hundred thousand a year, or were we talking a million a year? I mean, I was just running some quick numbers, but I didn't, I wasn't quite clear on how many, are we, does it look like the projected students are dropping about fifty a year?
Right, so we, we do a projection at the end of the year, um, with our F-one ninety-six um, of the next three or four years. But those aren't accurate. And I think, you know, our, our local ESD in Pasco, Travis talks about that all the time. We cannot predict things happening, like the COVID pandemic. We can project a four or five-year flow, but we cannot predict what happens in between. Um, and so yes, those projections, we do those every year and OSPI requires those every year. But it's very, very hard to be accurate in the environment that we're living in. That's, that's the unfortunate part. So we can definitely do that and we do. We have one um, on the OSP, OSPI website um, for the next four years. Um, but it's not, it's not very accurate at all.
Okay.
I think, I'm gonna say, if you look at that best.
I think, I think we could, I mean, although we won't know funding rates, could come up with an estimate of what we would need to cut over the next five years based on this enrollment. We could do, I, I'll say Delise can do that. Delise can do that.
I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I remember a couple of years ago, we said we, I don't remember if we saw it in last year's budget, but we had, we got to see budgets from like five to seven years ago, as they progressed throughout, uh, up to the current and the future, like plus three years. Do you remember seeing that?
So our, our F-one ninety-five, the, the budget document, it shows this year and then the last two years on that budget document. Um, but I mean, OSPI has all of our budget documents on their website. Uh, we can go in and download them and send them off. Um, but every F-one ninety-five has a current year and then the previous two years budget and actual on it.
I don't know if I'm remembering this right, but we had a really large increase in the budget. I don't remember where, it was probably in nineteen or twenty, maybe twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one?
Essar, probably.
It was Essar money. We had about four million, then another couple million. I mean, it was a lot of money.
Right, but I, I thought it was a little bit larger. I wish, I'll have to dig it. I got it somewhere. I'll just, I'll find it. But it seemed like we had a huge budget spike. I think a lot of it was Essar money. But I don't know if it came back down as much as without the Essar money. It seemed like the budget, once it got to a certain point, it just stayed there.
Well, and I think across the state, that's the issue with a lot of districts is all this Essar money came in, this influx of dollars, and instead of reserving that cash, they increase their budgets, build schools, hired extra staff with that money instead of putting it into.
Right, I think we were pretty smart as a district, the, how we used it, but uh.
I think Essar was also one of those things, if you didn't use it, you lost it.
Yeah.
Right.
So it wasn't one where you could technically save it. So what, what, I mean, districts in general, and Delise can help me with this, Deanna can help. What you did was you spent your Essar money and tried to save your basic money.
Yeah.
Right? Does that make sense? But um, Prosser used some for buildings.
We had to use, we used some to help offset some construction costs, yeah. Um, we used, uh, we would have our, you'll see our data presentation in our um, K-eight uh, ELA data. We got that curriculum because of Essar. Um, so yeah, there's a, we, I mean, we definitely reaped some benefits from it, things that we maybe wouldn't have been able Um, so yeah, there's a, we, I mean, we definitely reaped some benefits from things that we maybe wouldn't have been able to do otherwise.
We did not increase our staff.
No, we did not increase ours. We didn't do, we didn't hire any staff.
Which is a blessing because we would be in a way different situation last year and this year than what we are.
Questions, comments?
A lot of information to digest.
Right?
For sure.
Uh, when, and when's the, when do we start the budget cycle again? Is that April?
Well, we, we're working on it literally right now. Um, through what we're going to do on our hiring, right? Um, what we're doing in projections. Um, this is our first meeting. I don't know if we're going to, because of spring break and so forth, we'll do another budget study type. Um, after we get a little further on, we have five open contracts right now. The PSE is the big one, majority of our staff, and we have athletic coaches. We have, um, sorry, P A E L P, which is your building secretary and principals. And, you know, so we sat by, we've been sitting down and starting that, that's called interest-based bargaining and trying to do that. Um, so all of those things are gonna come into play. Um, and, you know, you, it's, it's, that is what it is. This is a lot. We're, we are committed, the three of us are committed to doing a lot more or as much early as we can, so that we're not hitting that August deadline down to the last minute.
That's why we decided to have this study session tonight.
When we might not be everybody's favorite.
All right.
Any other questions? So, Frank, please. Frank, any, any additional questions, comment?
Well, well, I'm just hoping that we get some businesses that move into our area, some good things happen. I mean, we gotta, we gotta try to stay positive. I think the hospital opening up, I wonder if that's gonna have some positive effect. Um, but yeah, hope, hope the growth could, could help with some of this.
I agree. Um, with that, uh, right, we have a regular board meeting, uh, next Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, right here in the boardroom at six P M. Uh, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.